I'd like to call the, uh, meeting of the Board of Education to order and have the clerk lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation on your side in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming out on this nice spring night. If I could have a motion and a second that the, uh, agenda of May 23rd, 2017 be approved as presented. Any questions, comments, alterations on our agenda? All those in favor? Aye, thank you. We're now officially opening a public hearing in regard to our school's safety plan. And in line with that and our district emergency response plan, I'm asking, uh, Mr. Alan McNiff to come forward and present to us.
Thank you, John, I appreciate that. So, I want to go through the, um, emergency response planning for the coming, uh, school So, on, on the items of discussion, uh, to discuss tonight is the district emergency response plan, uh, safety initiatives that we're doing and looking to do, and then, uh, discussion of Rapid Responder, a web-based software. So, the first aspect of this, um, conversation is the district emergency response plan. I know you folks are familiar for this when Sue Kumar presented it for the last couple of years. Uh, we were required, um, by state commissioners' regulation to do this on an annual basis. Uh, we were required by Safe Schools Against Violence in Education, and, uh, our document is shared with New York State Police for their review and feedback. And then finally, it's provided to, um, New York State, uh, state, excuse me, New York's State Education Department per regulation requirements. Inside the district emergency response plan includes those items you see on the screen as well as other provisions. So, what do we need to do on an annual basis? Uh, the first step is it must be reviewed by the district health and safety committee with a recommendation to proceed with a public hearing as part of a Board of Education meeting, which is tonight. That public hearing must take place on a yearly basis and allow for a 30-day comment period from the public. After 30 days, the Board shall adopt the plan. The plan needs to be adopted prior to September 1st each year. Uh, the plan for this coming school year, uh, we evaluate as part of the health and safety committee meeting. There were no recommended changes. The plan that we have in place is, um, pretty solid. We didn't see any reasons to alter that. So, tonight is a formality for that conversation and comment period. Any questions on the planned requirements?
Board members, any questions? I know we all had a comprehensive, uh, package in regard to this. Okay.
So, we'll go through some other items with regards to safety initiatives. Um, the first thing is the Capitol Security Project. We're winding down on that project, as most of you know. We have a few, a couple of odds and ends that are getting finalized. Um, but with that project, um, we obviously increased a lot of our front entrance, um, pieces and how they function. So, it's, um, one of those major staples, um, security cameras, things of that nature. So, that project's, uh, finalizing. Um, the district safety plan, what, which we just talked about, um, there was one item that the law does require is that we are required to provide that information to new hires. Well, a document that's close to 200 pages, a pretty significant document for a new hire to read, and, uh, and that just is not easy to, um, obtain that information quickly. Uh, so, Barb Gregory, uh, did a lot with helping me, uh, start just a quick reference guide to, to give the new employees. So, Barb did a great baseline. I edited it to be in line with our, uh, what our, um, plan is, and then, um, Barb's gonna fi- make some final adjustments to them, and then provide that to new hires during the course of the summer so that we have that document at hand and can provide it to those new hires. I appreciate Barb us going through that and getting that done behind us. Probably the most important safety thing that we have been working on throughout the school year is the Rapid Responder and, uh, continuing that implementation. And, uh, I'm not sure how much all of you know about the Rapid Responder program. It was, um, it's a web-based, um, interface that Sue Kumar and I started just before her leaving, is, um, bringing on the software to try to get rid of the paper, try to get things that are more electronic-based, and, and be a little more dovetailed with the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department throughout, um, our region has been trying to push this, um, protocol of using the software, um, with the other school districts so that they can easily obtain our information, um, during the course of an event or even before that event. What are the, what are the areas that we would prefer to stage and things of that nature so that they have information beforehand and also on the fly when, and the situation does come up? So, it's been a, it's been a nice process on how that works. So, what's included with Rapid Responder, there's basically, um, what I want to call the main administrative face, which includes, we have all of our documents. Our district emergency response plan is in there. All of those pieces that are in that large document are in there. The Burt, the building emergency response plan, each of the buildings has their own plan, that, those documents are also in that software system. And then it also includes other capacities such as building, uh, level drills and events. They're able to log those events into the system when we have a track record. Um, and actually, real events, if we have real events that take place, we can log them in there and pull them up down the road if we need them. And that has happened. We've had this in place for about a year, and something very small from an, an accident that happens, or, um, a false fire alarm or something of that nature, we're able to record that. There have been instances where we've needed to recall that information, uh, for insurance purposes, and we're able to get that information, what, when the event took place, who was involved in the police report. So, it's actually been a nice tool for us to kind of put those items in one location so that's organized, and it sets more of a protocol for all of the buildings in a more easier fashion to, for them to get to and modify. So, it's kind of a nice tool from that aspect. And then finally, this system also, um, provides an Easy Alert applic- application. I'm gonna go through some, um, excuse me, some slides to show you what that looks like. But essentially, this is something we're starting to play with a little bit. This Easy Alert functionality is kind of like, uh, an, what I want to say, um, um, a tool that you have on any mobile device, you would have on your computer, you could have on your iPad, and it's an automatic notification piece. So, um, it's set up for whoever we want to allow that access to. Um, so, if there is an event at the high school, for example, during our recent windstorms, we had lots of different things happening all at the same time. I'm able to go onto my phone, press that there's an event happening at the high school, severe weather, I can identify that information and take pictures and send them. They all get sent out to the distribution list that we have pre-created. So, when we had that, I was able to take that photo, send that information, and it automatically goes, without me having to pick people, it automatically goes to a distribution list that's associated with the high school. So, that would include Howard Hennig and Leslie Maloney, and everyone at the, uh, district office that we've included on there. So, at the same time, we're all getting the information at the same time, rather than everyone's trying to text to each other, making sure you don't miss somebody, or having to call and not have signal, that sort of thing. We're starting to play with it, see how well it works. Um, this summer, um, Jim Pfeifer and I are going to try to coordinate a drill of using that, uh, application with all the administrators to see how well it works, how well is it really gonna function? Um, but it's, but it's a nice tool. It's, it's included, uh, with the program. To show you some of the, um, uh, interface and what it includes, what you're looking at on this particular graphic is actually the mobile portion of it, which includes the static information of the, um, emergency response plans, contact information, things of that nature. So, what's nice about this is for that side, just the documents we've talked about, the response plans for each of the buildings, the district-wide plans, the, uh, contact information for all the employees, the, uh, we can set that up so specific individuals can get certain buildings, and they can download that information into the Rapid Responder Program application on the phone, and it's there. It doesn't need to have the Wi- a Wi-Fi signal or a cellphone service to have that information. So, let's say that goes down and you need to at least find that, what's that phone number for Howard Hennig? It's on there. You don't have to have that connection for those pieces, which is kind of nice to have. And as you can tell, the, on the, the left-hand side of the screen there, you see, it has information where he says "emergency," that's actually the emergency plan. And once you click on that emergency plan, it takes you to the screen you see on the right-hand side, which includes portions of that emergency plan. So, accidents and injuries, those forms, um, and you can see they go through particulars, the cardiac arrest, um, food poisoning, those type of things. Those are all the things that are included in our district-wide plan that you can click on, and they, and it shows you, um, that, uh, text information. So, in the past, we've had these books in the main office of, of this information. Well, where's that book? Now, we can easily give it to users and just have it on their mobile devices. So, right now, I can pull it off and see it and read it, any of those type of things we might need to use. So, it's actually a nice tool to kind of get away from that old paper version, and now we have it. And the nicety is, is that if we update it, the new user could, gets a new update and it comes through. It's not having to change that book out, um, it's all in one place. So, these are kind of some nice staples. And as you can tell, if you go through the contact pages, you can see on the right-hand side, we have all of, um, the contacts listed in there for each building. And again, these mirror between any of the devices that you use, if it's a computer, uh, iPad, or a, uh, phone device. You can't see very well from this, um, projector here, but what you're looking at is a snapshot I took from, um, computer. And on this is actually the, uh, drills for, um, Bay Trail and Scribner. Uh, so what they can do, which is kind of nice, is they can record all of the drills, like I talked about, and events. So, on a basis, I can check throughout the year, how are you guys doing on your drills? Are you doing them? Have they ran into issues? Um, this has been a nice tool to, to make sure the buildings are doing that, but they also like it themselves. They can record, well, where do we stand, instead of having to do the old paper form, where are we at, um, how are these things taking place, and, and can create notes on it. So, it's been, it's been a nice piece to, to organize it. They can do that on the fly through that Easy Alert application and just create a, a drill through, using that piece, or they can do it beforehand and log it into this system, which is nice. So, they know, oh, we're gonna schedule this event on this day, oh, it's raining that day, let's pick another day. They can change that. It's kind of like a nice organizational tool for them to, to conduct those, um, drills. And then finally, I wanted to show this, which has to do with that Easy Alert function that, um, I, I talked about earlier, which is kind of like, um, a live feed of, um, communication. So, on the left-hand side, you'll see, um, what my device looks like. I have all of the buildings listed here. If you have administrators that are only on a particular building, they might only have their building associated with it. Um, you would click, they would click on, um, their appropriate building, so you can see we have a, a kind of a draft here of a sample, essentially, where the high school has a drill that has been created. You see drill off the left-hand side in a little box with the, um, yellow and black symbol on it, means that there's a drill. I click into that to see what, what happens. I've joined the drill. And on the right-hand side is basically a chat log, chat log of information, so that those that are included with the high school would be getting that same dialogue. They can log in and then have communication all at the same time. So, it's like a chat forum that's, it's, it's always live and being updated, and things that you can include in there are photos, location, those type of things, which is kind of a nice tool if it works appropriately. So, we gotta run some more, um, testing on it, see how well it really works. It's kind of a neat, uh, application if it does work well. Any questions on what I kind of briefly went through, the, either the, the plans, or, um, Rapid Responder, or any other safety initiatives?
Board members, Catherine.
So, on this one slide here, when you're, um, when all this information is being put in and received, that's all by texting, or typing, or are you talking?
You're typing it. You're typing it into your, um, your devices. Yeah, so, most of the time, if, if this is happening in a real event, we're trying to use this, we're gonna be using mobile devices. And the one thing we've talked about with the building administrators, especially the building administrators that are really getting into this, is having a person next to them in the event that, uh, something does happen, because they're gonna be, a principal's gonna be handling the event. They're going to be directing people where to go, where, they're gonna have an admin with them, type, type this in, do this, take a picture of this, so that they have somebody that's doing that for them, so that they're not lost in that of, oh, hold on, let me take a picture. You're not doing that. No, but it's, it's, it's good to have that communication, so at least, uh, if I'm getting feedback, um, at least I know what's happening a little bit more, uh, quickly, or, uh, quicker, should've been, sorry for the term, but, um, but more quick turn, turnaround on, um, what information is happening out there, so we can share it more fluently.
Yeah, it, it seems like it would work better if you could, i- if it could be recorded or something and, and translated and that. I don't know, maybe that's an improvement that'll come in time or something.
It's possible.
Yeah.
The one thing that is nice about this is that when the event is over, we can close the event, it's logged. Our, our entire, uh, communication message stream is recorded.
Right.
So, we have that information in there, whether it be photos, or texts, or that sort of thing, if we needed it. Like, when, when did that exactly happen? What was the time that that came through? Those type of things could be important in the future, determining things.
That's true, yeah.
For me, I think if it's more so when it's gonna come to accidents from outsiders of, and that, that type of thing, we've had that happen, um, and it's been helpful determining some of those, um, results.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, any other questions? Uh, this is a public hearing, so are there any questions from the audience in attendance? Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it, and, uh, we look forward to hearing more as usual, so...
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Alan, and, uh, that officially closes our public hearing on our school's safety plan.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're back in our regular business. Uh, if I could have a motion and a second that the, uh, consent agenda be approved as presented?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments on the consent agenda? All those in favor? Thank you. We had in our packet, uh, Treasurers Report for the month ending April 30th, 2017. If I could have a motion a second that the Treasurers Report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending April 30th, 2017 be approved. Any questions or comments on any of the above reports? All those in favor? Thank you. Uh, we have some special reports, and I'll let Dr. Putnam lead us through them.
Great, we can, uh, we have two special reports this evening. Uh, first is gonna be the robotics presentation, um, as well, and then followed by our work-based learning presentation. So, I'll actually have, I'll turn to Eric Brewer, if you could, um, come up and, or have the students come up and introduce everybody that's here, because I don't want to leave out a student, or a staff member, or any of our, um, great Harris mentors as well.
Hi, my name's Katie, I'm a senior, and I'm the lead of marketing on the robotics team.
Hi, I'm Kate, um, I'm a sophomore, and I am the lead programmer on the robotics team.
I'm Jordan, I am a junior, and I'm the head of community service on the robotics team.
And over there, our drivers are Casey and Andrew. Say hi, guys. They're both juniors on the team, they're part of our drive team. And over there, we got, we got some of our, our favorite nerds over there. There's lovely Mr. Brewer, give him a hand, right? And then, Pizzo, come on, keep it going. And then there's Larry and Mr. Saig, who is Jordan's father. You can give him a hand, too.
I messed that up last year, I did it right this time.
Yeah, we got this. Learn from your mistakes. All right, so, as most of you hopefully know, we're the first robotics team. Right now, we are celebrating our 13th year, going into our 14th. Every team has a mission statement. Ours is inspiring students to become leaders through engineering and the fun of first robotics. We have a very extensive leadership program on our team, and me and Jordan are both a member of it, and as I said, we are in our 13th season.
So, our team is made up of 49 students, and we have 29 mentors, 11 of which are Harris employees. Harris is, um, our main sponsor, they make radios for the military. And then, the rest of our mentors are community parent, community mentors, um, a lot of them are parents of students or past students. And then, we have our three teachers, Mr. Brewer, Mr. Pizzo, and Mr. Wisebrow.
Um, and actually, on that note of who compiles the team and our sponsor, we'd also like, on behalf of the entire team, we'd like to extend a huge thank you to the Board, uh, because without you guys, we wouldn't be able to do what we get to do every day. And personally, I like what I do every day. It's a lot of fun, so, thank you. So, uh, today, uh, this year, we went to two regional competitions, and then we were fortunate enough to, uh, qualify for the World Championships in St. Louis, Missouri. Uh, and then at each, uh, each event, we were actu- we were fortunate enough to win some sort of award or recognition. At the Finger Lakes Regional, which takes place at RIT in mid-March, um, one of our mentors, her name is Sinek Cavalier, she won the Woody Flowers Award, which recognizes a mentor for outstanding skills in communication, inspiration, and STEM, um, there's one more, do it.
Leadership.
Leadership, thank you, and leadership. Uh, at that same competition, we also were fortunate to win the Chairman's Award, which is the highest award you can win in first, and essentially, um, a team that wins that award is a role model for all the other teams. They excel in, uh, technical ability, they excel in community service, um, they excel in something we call gracious professionalism, gracious professionalism, which essentially is be nice to everyone, uh, and, you know, keep it professional, keep it nice. We also got an honorable mention for safety, uh, because everyone walked out with all their fingers and toes. Um, and then, myself was, I, I was incredibly honored to, uh, be a finalist for the Dean's List Award, which, uh, it's essentially a student version of the Woody Flowers Award. Um, it, uh, it recognizes students for, uh, outstanding technical knowledge, um, leadership and community service. At the Midwest Regional, we, which was, took place in Chicago, uh, we actually won the event, so shout out to Casey and Andrew, uh, they're on our drive team. Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot there, guys.
It's okay, they're cute.
Uh, so, we, we were, we were thrilled to win that. Uh, that was actually the first time we won a regional as our, as our alliance captains. We also got, uh, we were fortunate enough to win the Engineering Inspiration Award, which recognizes a team that inspires, um, the growth of STEM and STEM classes in their school, uh, and our, uh, just all-around community. Uh, and once again, we got an honorable mention for safety because we walked out with all our fingers and toes again.
So, in total, we qualified three times for the World Championships this year.
And unfortunately, they don't carry over.
Yeah, we got this next year.
And then, at the championship event, which took place last week of April in St. Louis, Missouri, uh, eat, there are, there were 427 teams present, and they're, they're divided into six divisions, each named after a famous scientist or, um, engineer. And we were placed in the Kiri Division, and we placed in the top 12 teams out of, uh, more than 400, and we made it to, uh, the Einstein Field, which is essentially the top teams from each of the division fields, make it to Einstein, and they play off, and then after that, the, uh, tournament winner is announced.
So, every year, we do 50-plus demos, community services and fundraisers, that was the number we had for this year, and for demonstrations. We do as local as the local elementary schools. Uh, next week, we'll, I believe it's next week, we'll be demoing at Cob- at Cobles, actually. And then, we go as far away as the New York State Fair, and then we do more crazy demos like at a food truck rodeo. And for our community services, I believe we did 15 or 16 this year, and a lot of them consist of walks and different efforts to support current and past members of our team, like we do the JDRF walk for Jordan, the Juvenile Diabetes Walk. And we also did congenital heart disease braver bags for Larry's baby, Leo. And of course, we also do more traditional ones like food drives, volunteer at soup kitchens, things like that.
So, one of the other endeavors, I suppose you could call it, that the team undertook was 3D printing prosthetic hands, and I am incredibly fortunate to be a part of this project. It is so cool and so much fun. Um, so essentially, we work with an organization called Enable, and, uh, what we do is, well, we 3D print prosthetic hands for kids, and, uh, we will send these hands to Enable, and then, uh, they will find someone who would fit. Basically, they have, um, I believe, actually, I think they have a literal map of people who have 3D printers, and then people who need hands, and they can find people who are closest to those that have, that have a need, that, you know, you can get them a hand and, uh, then they can carry on. And actually, we, at, at championships every year, there are, what, we have conferences, and these conferences can, uh, they can pretend to anything from chairman's and marketing, uh, aspects to the latest update in Java software. Uh, and anyone can apply for a conference. So, our team applied for a conference about this project, and we got accepted, which was incredibly, incredibly, incredibly cool. Uh, and we figured to, you know, to beef it up a little bit, rather than just us, we would see if anyone from Enable could join us. So, uh, Amel sent out, Amel, uh, she's a student on our team, she sent out an email to Enable. And then, a few weeks later, when we took, when we had that conference, we ended up presenting with the founders of Enable, which, I cannot tell you how cool it is to meet them. They are possibly the nicest people I've ever met.
Seconded.
Uh, and also, this year, we found out that one of our hands made it all the way to Iraq, which is incredibly cool that a bunch of high schoolers in North America helps a kid all the way across the other side of the world, so...
And now, we're also working with a team from Israel to grow and make this project more well-known in the first community, get more teams involved.
Um, and also, since we met, we got to meet with the founders of Enable, we, uh, we learn more about their organization, we learn more about what they do. And we are currently working with them to, uh, expand, to further the development of hands. One of the students on our team, Hannah, she is currently designing her own hand, uh, as her own personal project, or I believe it's actually a project for Mr. Brewer's engineering and design development class. Um, and, uh, like, they need things like testing, see, they need formal tests of, you know, what material works better, what design works better, things like that. So, we're really helping them to, um, formalize this process.
That's you.
That's you, Kate.
So, currently, besides our prosthetic hand project, we're doing some smaller things, trying to help outreach. Um, so, we have, we do bottle and can recycling, we have, um, bins in the cafeteria here to get people to recycle more. Um, and we've also put robotics into five of the district schools, there's a typo, sorry. Um, but we have, um, Lego robotics teams in the elementary schools and the middle school, and then, we started our very own, um, first tech challenge team, which is a lot like our team, just shrunk down a little bit, um, and they're at the middle school. Um, and actually, that team is kind of a feeder team for us, so I think both Jordan and I were on that team originally, and then we've moved up to the high school team, so... Um, and then, we also try to help the teams that we've started, because it's not really good starting a team if they don't know what they're doing. Um, so, we help them with the, like, design aspects, programming, and then they also have to do a research project, which we help them with presenting. And then, we also, um, talk to people at the Homecoming Carnival.
We hold several large events throughout the year. One of our first ones is called Ra-Cha-Cha Ruckus, which is an off-season event we host at the Main Street Armory. We co-host it with other teams, because it's so big, we can't do it ourselves. Uh, this year's ruckus, we had, well, 2016's ruckus, had 42 teams from several different states as well as Canada. And then, we also hold an event called Rochester Rally, which I know some of you have been to, and it's, uh, off-season scrimmage that we host towards the very end of build season, so teams can test out the robots that they just built and see whatever modifications they need to make before build season ends.
Uh, two more of the events we hold every year are the All Mer- All, well, we call it Armag, it stands for All Rookie Meet and Greet. It's actually a, uh, a very brief social networking event that we will hold at championships. And essentially, uh, we hand out flyers of, you know, uh, tell, we tell people what time, where it is, and then, it's, uh, all these rookie teams- And then, it's, all these rookie teams that make it to Champs, they get to come and talk to each other, you know, they learn each other's stories, they meet veteran teams. We actually end up doing a, I guess you'd call it a scavenger hunt? Where you actually have to go up and talk to people, and say, you know, hey, I'm from Penfield, New York, or I'm from Chicago, Illinois. And you meet people, and then you learn something about them, and then you get them to sign off on the, on your sheet. And then, at the end, whoever has the most, most people they met wins. Which ironically, that actually works out really well for a bunch of antisocial nerds.
And we also offer them information about sustainability, because at this point, a lot of these teams are really reliant on their school, and that can't last forever, so we teach them more methods of fundraising and outreach.
And then, one of the, another one of the events we hold every year is Rumble, and that's actually an off-season FLL event. Basically, it's their version of ruckus. So, it helps to keep them engaged, maybe they want to try out a new design, maybe they want to just have fun. That's, that's something we offer for them, and it's a lot of fun to see, you know, these kids come together, and even when, and not, they're not in a, the heat of competition, they're still, they're still having a blast, and they're learning a lot.
Okay, so, some of our upcoming events, we are actually demoing at the Cobble's Ice Cream Social. I think that's a couple of weeks. And then, we also have our annual team picnic on Saturday, June tenth. It's at the Harris Whalen Park. All of you are invited, if you'd like to come.
Don't forget your super soakers.
And then, we're also going to the JDRF Walk for Jordan on Sunday, June eleventh, which is the next day. And then, also, we are co-organizing the FIRST National Advocacy Conference, which we go down to DC, and we talk with representatives and senators, and try to advocate for FIRST and STEM in schools.
So, for our major creation rates, one hundred percent of our students have graduated high school, ninety-five percent of which have gone into college or straight into the careers of the military. And eighty-eight percent are in STEM majors, and ninety-one percent are in STEAM majors, which is STEM plus arts. And we track our alumni through social media, because, you know, how else would we do it these days?
So, as you can see, we brought our robot. So, this is our 2017 robot, and its name is Thunder Shogun.
A little bit of background about the name. One of our alumni, an alumni at Penfield, of course, Tommy Murphy, unfortunately, he passed away last year. And in memory of him, we named the robot after him, because that was his video game screen name. So, we did it in memory of him, and you can actually see it on the robot. That says in memory of him.
So, this year, the challenge, there are basically three ways you could score. So, if you can see, in the front of the robot, there's a big yellow gear. So, you had to place those gears onto pegs, and the concept of the game is kind of steampunk-themed. So, there's an airship, and you wanted your airship to be able to take flight. So, you had to build enough pressure in, like, air pressure to get your airship to take off. And you also had to place gears on the airship, so you could have four rotors spinning at the end of the match. So, on the front of our robot where the gear is, is our mechanism, which would place it on pegs on the airship, and then they would be taken up. If you want to run it. So, it basically has a little flap, which pops the gear out, and it would actually fall into a peg, not onto the floor.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, yeah, crush fingers. So, also, in order to build up pressure, you had wiffle balls, they're probably about this big. And so, you had to shoot them into this giant tower, right? So, on the front of the robot, we have a thing that spins that intakes the balls. So, that brings them in. In the center of our robot is this giant tub, which holds all of them. It can hold, like, forty balls at a time, so you can get a lot of points with that. And then, in the back of our robot is actually a shooter, which it's running probably like half-power right now, so it's kind of low. Probably knock a couple of ceiling tiles out, but don't want to do that. But that's probably really cool. You want to run that?
You're gonna shoot at us? Are you kidding me? Get your own.
So, that's the shooter.
Thank you for putting it on half-power, by the way.
And then, so also, the third part, the last part of the robot was, in the last thirty seconds of the game, there is a rope which hung down from the airship. And it looked something like this, probably a little longer. This is actually, it broke during one of the matches. But, the back of our robot has a little bar which spins, and then it catches on to the end of the rope, which is frayed like this. And then, the robot goes climbing up a rope, and it's probably like two feet off the ground, which is kind of terrifying.
The hundred and twenty pounds of robots weighing back and forth in midair.
And we've all spent a lot of time working on this robot. But I think those are probably the main features of it. But we did pretty well with it. As we said, we won a regional with it, which is the best we've ever done, so.
And of course, we only have six weeks every year to build this robot. And in those six weeks, we have forty-nine students on our team. They put in over five thousand five hundred hours in this, which is nearly a year's worth of time in just the span of six weeks.
Just to clarify, since, you know, the robotics team decided to do some math, it's about two hundred and twenty-nine point one six days. Just to clarify.
So, it's also pretty fast, you can see.
So, yeah, thank you for having us. It's been a pleasure. We, we hope you enjoyed our presentation. And actually, we have one question we'd like to ask you before we leave. So, this past year, one of our students, his name is Jeffrey Hastings. He started a survey, and he asked this survey wherever we went. So, he would ask it at the Finger Lakes Regional, he asked it in Chicago, and he asked it at Champs. And he would go up to people, and he would ask them, is a hot dog a sandwich? So, we, we came to the conclusion that in Chicago, no, a hot dog is not qualified as a sandwich. In New York, in Penfield, New York, it does. St. Louis is about a fifty-fifty split, in case you're curious. So, being the Board of Education and having the power that you do, we would like to know, what do you think? By a show of hands, do you think a hot dog is a sandwich?
Raise your hand for yes, down for no.
Board members, raise your hand if you believe a hot dog is a sandwich.
You better raise your hands, because it's a sandwich.
I guess everyone's abstaining to your wisdom.
Oh, oh, fine.
We got one.
Yeah, Jim, Jim, Dr., or Mr. Pfeifer thinks it's a sandwich.
Wait, I think this is a public hearing, was the audience thing. Is it a sandwich?
Yeah, it's all a-
Yeah, that's my man.
Oh, it's an entree.
Well, this is an entree.
Sandwiches can be entrees.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, we'll do that next year, I promise.
That's the key. If you want to get an affirmative response, feed the board. Well, this has been outstanding, and I, you know, I really would like to see you hit a ceiling tile.
Casey, can you make that happen?
I, I can make that happen.
Yeah, that's okay. Alan, close your eyes. And I know a dog that would love to chase that thing around all day. But again, it's astounding how, or continue to be amazed by what you do every year. And it's just, you're great ambassadors of our school, our community, and, you know, the proof of that is where everybody ends up, you know, in jobs in STEM or STEAM or whatever that is. So, we appreciate you going out and representing us on behalf of, of the board and the school, because it's just a, it's a great thing, and every year, it just gets better. Board members, anything to add? It's just, it's just tremendous. Camille.
I just had a question, since it's this time of year. I think you said you're a senior?
Yep.
And if, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but do you want to tell us where any, where you or any of your fellow seniors are going on next year?
Well, right now, I'm going to Penn State. I'm going to be majoring in marketing, because that's what I did on the team. I actually wrote my entire college essay on the team, so I think that's kind of what got me into it. And I'm also in the honors program, which I'm very excited about.
Great, great.
I know three of our other seniors are all going to University of Buffalo. And like, one's going to MCC, and I think another's going to RIT. There's probably more I'm forgetting.
WPI, I believe one person's going to, and, what is it? The one in New York, the one we kind of-
Columbia.
Columbia.
Thank you, gonna need it.
Good luck, and thank you again, and thank you to, I'm sorry, wait a que- Catherine.
I just want to commend you on your poise and your enthusiasm. You're, you're very, well-
Glad it was evident.
Very knowledgeable about what you're doing. I love the, the humor and the, the, you know, the more intricate aspects of what you're doing, but your poise and your grace, it was just an outstanding presentation. So, who knows to you?
Thank you. I'm actually glad we have the tablecloth, because otherwise, you'd notice my legs have been shaking the whole time.
Well, it didn't show.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and good luck moving forward, and to our advisors and teachers.
So, as the robotics team is picking up, we'll bring the teachers up to talk about work-based learning, as well as Nicole Whitehead and Dr. Maloney. And just remind the board to, I know they're not going to be as exciting as the Penfield Robotics team, but, but-
We don't know that.
I'm, I'm always going to put students first, so, so I think it's a pretty hard act to follow, but I'll let them introduce themselves to the board and the community.
So, we're probably throwing poor Mike for a loop here, because there's so many of us presenting, but I, this team that you're seeing here, we have met very regularly to work on this, to make work-based learning a reality for next year. It's been a dream for a number of years, and it's really happening. So, we're very excited. You'll hear, each member of the team has brought a great piece to the puzzle, and we'll, we'll jump right in to get you familiar with work-based learning, yes.
I, I don't know if everybody's presented to the board before. Could you just do introductions?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
I'm Stephanie Dana, a school counselor at the high school and the chair of the department.
Hello again, Nicole Whitehead, Director of STEAM.
Hi, I'm Jen Nicholas. I'm a new business teacher and the work-based learning coordinator.
Terry Marsh, I'm the assistant principal for the ninth grade class at the high school.
So, the work-based learning programs, what you'll, they're going to get into the, the nuts and bolts, but what you're going to hear is the work-based learning program connects students with real-world experience and really getting a chance to taste, get a taste of those careers that they're interested in pursuing. So, you know, the bullets here get students out of the classroom and into the real world, and it's really, it's for any student in any subject, not just business. So, there's a little bit of a story here, and Nicole will elaborate a little bit on that. But there's a connection between work-based learning and CTE. And as we've, CTE is Career Technical Education, and that's something that other districts around us have been able to offer their students. And that's really the seed that started this, was our exploration into, into CTE. And it's blossomed into work-based learning, and I'm excited for everybody to share the story.
So, why work-based learning? First off, we are so excited that students are going to have the opportunity to earn credit towards graduation. So, the programs that you will hear about tonight will all go on their high school transcripts, and they will earn credit, and they will earn grades for these programs. And that's something that we haven't been able to do in the past, until we brought our work-based learning coordinator in. So, that's super exciting, and it's, I think it also taps a group of students here that have jobs in our community and really value working. They have, not every student is always able to be involved in extracurriculars and activities and sports. And students who do have jobs and are passionate about their jobs, they're actually going to be able to earn credit for the work they do in the community, in addition to students who do internships. And we'll learn more about that in just a second. Obviously, developing career skills is part of educating the whole student. Getting them prepared for post-secondary goals, whether that be direct entry into the workforce, or whether that's college. But the skills that they will be developing, they will be learning those both, as you'll see, in the classroom, but also on the job, that applied experience. We hope that this will allow kids to kind of clarify their goals. So, as you think about a student who's doing an internship, it's so valuable to have that experience in high school, rather than their second or third year of college, when you've been paying that bill, and then they decide they want to make a change. So, you know, we always say, it's also very valuable to maybe not like the career you're exploring in high school, because then you learn, maybe it's worthwhile to go down a different path. And finally, to strengthen our students' resumes for work, with work experience. Their resumes, students submit those to jobs, but they also submit them to college. And on the Common Application, it does ask about work experience, and that's a valuable piece when students are applying to college. So, how have we gotten here? Geez, quite a few years ago, a small group of us actually met in this high school library, and we started to explore CTE. And as Dr. Maloney said, CTE stands for Current Technical Education. And here at Penfield, in the past, we've only been able to offer CTE by having our students go to BOSI's. So, students will, would go, and, and they still do incredible vocational programs at BOSI's that we love. But we also felt that here at the high school, we offer robust programs in technology, in the arts, in business. And how great would that be if in Penfield, we could offer career and technical endorsement for a student's diploma? And that's a special designation a student can get on their high school diploma, which shows that they have really fulfilled skills to carry this industry-endorsed seal for their diploma. So, tech teachers, business teachers, counselors, and administrators, we met. And what we learned was that we needed to start taking some steps to get here. It wasn't going to happen overnight. So, that was a couple of years ago, and Nicole's going to kind of explain the rest.
So, one of the first things that we decided to do was to reach out to some other neighboring districts that had some pretty successful programs already up and running. And they have been a tremendous asset to us, in, just in terms of collaborating, and we've formed really great relationships with them. And so, I had the opportunity to spend some time with Sandy Hudek over at Fairport. She's phenomenal. She's very experienced with this. And really, the first thing that she gave us guidance on was that we needed to really hire somebody that could oversee that as, as a very main responsibility of their job. That in order to even apply for CTE accreditation, that you needed to have a work-based learning program up and running. So, and, and then, and what we found out was that in order to have a work-based learning program up and running, you actually have to have a teacher with work-based learning certification. So, at that time, we did not have that. And to Jennifer. So, Dr. Maloney and, and the help of the board approved bringing Jennifer on board, which was such a tremendous asset to our team. She's been fantastic to work with. So, so then, her and I really started taking off on continuing to gather evidence. She had a lot of other great connections and reached out to other school districts. And, and what we really determined from there was, you know, this sounds great, let's see if there's a lot of interest in the, in the school for this, because we're all excited about it, but if kids aren't, then... So, we, we surveyed all the ninth through twelfth graders earlier this year through PE, and we had a phenomenal response rate, and we had overwhelming interest in a program. Which then, in one of our various meetings, we sat and looked through the data, and Terry was excellent at compiling the data for us. And we looked at the data, and we said, you know, this, this, we need to make this happen, because kids are really, really interested. So, we sat down and continued our research from other districts. We've contacted the state, the folks over at State Ed that oversee CTE and work-based learning, and had a lot of great discussions, Jennifer and I did. And, and then, from there, we decided that, yeah, we're going to go ahead and offer some new courses next year that will fall into the work-based learning program. Those three courses are work study, which, Jen, I'll let her go into detail on those, but we like to think of that as more of our career awareness program. We have the Career Exploration, or they call it CEIP for, because we love acronyms in education, right? So, and that one is more of a career exploration, just like the name lends itself. So, and that one is more of a career exploration, just like the name lends itself. And then our last one is Co-op where we...real specific skills that we want kids to develop. So I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer, who can give us more information about that.
Hi, guys. Thanks so much for having me in tonight. So the different programs...I'm going to push this button. We broke it into three different programs. The first is a work-study program, which the acronym is GWAP, which stands for General Education Work Experience Program, but we liked work-study better. So basically, this is your student who is already out there working a part-time job. They're interested in seeing how, what they're doing at Wegmans or Midvale Country Club, how that relates, how they can use those skills and transfer them. So the focus of this is really that career awareness of transferable skills. The requirement is they have to complete at least 150 work hours per semester in order to get that credit. But I think most of the kids that have enrolled are a full year, so they'll actually do about 300 hours for the full credit. The in-class...all of these programs have an in-classroom piece, which is really important because that's how we tie it, what they're doing at work. That's how we tie it into what they're going to do, whether they go to college or whether they go on to write into the world of work. So they would meet with me in the classroom once every five-day cycle and we would do some of that coursework, which might center around...at first, it'll center around resumes and interviewing skills. Then it'll go into more workplace issues, you know, communication, spelling words out and not using, you know... Saying actually TO instead of the number two for...to, you know, some of those things that they just don't know yet that they need to do. So the second program that we're going to offer, excuse me, is the Career Exploration Internship Program. This is for students who are looking to explore what their potential careers might be. And we'll go into a few examples after I've explained the programs, which should help you understand the differences a little bit better. This program is really about career exploration. It's about finding out if they're interested in what they think they're actually interested in once they get into the real world and see what they're doing there. They have to complete at least 54 hours of work per semester, and all of the work sites have to be approved. So I'll visit a few times a year. I'll work directly with a mentor. Specifically for the internship program, they will have a direct mentor who will really oversee what they're doing. It'll be...there'll be a training plan. It'll be very guided and supervised experiences. And again, they'll meet with me once every five-day cycle to get that in-classroom instruction. The last program is called Co-op, and this is for...this is more focused. These are...this is a student that is really interested in a specific pathway. They've taken a lot of coursework that will direct them in that pathway. And this, they can actually...this could be a paid or an unpaid experience for them where they would actually get their hands dirty and do the work and find out, you know... Really kind of hone in on some of those specific skills that they're going to need to be successful once they go further. Again, it's 150 hours per semester, approved work site with an approved mentor. The only difference with the Co-op, they will meet with me once every five-day cycle. The difference here is that they also have to be enrolled in a related coursework. So you'll see more about that in the examples that we'll give. But if they're going into an accounting firm, they also need to be enrolled in like an accounting class. So here are some student examples, which should help. Okay, so student A, we'll call Jamie. She is working a part-time job at Wegmans in Penfield. She wants school credit for the hours that she's working. And she wants to learn how her skills transfer from her part-time job into what her next steps are. So that student is perfect for the work-study. The second student, we'll call Emma. She wants to be a teacher or an attorney. She's not sure. So this is actually a great candidate for internship because what we can do is help her learn about both careers. We could place her one semester with an elementary school teacher within the district. The next semester, we could place her doing paralegal work, you know, do an assistant work with a lawyer in a law firm. And that could really help guide her decision as to what she wants to do. I really loved working with children, or, you know, I'd rather just do that on the side and really go into this. It really helps her define what her goals may be. And then the last student, which you all met, Jordan. And he is not enrolled in Co-op, but I have been working on him. So student C, Jordan, wants to work for NASA Aerospace Engineering, a couple of different things he's throwing around in the engineering fields. He'll be completing the project Lead the Way Pathway. He is already enrolled in technology courses for next semester. And he wants real-world experience. So he could actually, we could place him in a Co-op where he could go to Thermo Fisher or another company in the community and actually help them out by doing some work for them. And in return, he's getting that hands-on real-world experience. It's perfect for his resume, and I'm working on him. But he would be the perfect candidate for Co-op. So I'm going to turn it over to Terry to let you know about our next steps.
So you heard a lot about our pathway and how we got here, but really what comes next for us is to continue to develop those partnerships. It takes a village for this one. There's a lot of kids that are interested. We're looking to start at about 25 students next year to be able to make it, number one, manageable, number two, to get it off the ground successfully, and to really get the momentum going. So those 25 students, we need to get opportunities, so building those partnerships with our community and area towns. We've started doing that through actually our Career Day that we had last week. Jen was running around with her new business cards, frantically passing them out and making those connections to try and kind of find those places when we have students interested. And then also continuing to talk with those school districts that already have successful programs. You know, if there are people that have already been through it, what worked, what didn't, and then continue on that path so that we can be successful. And we have so many kids that are interested and need this kind of experience. And so we're really excited to work within our building and also with our community members to get it off the ground. Oh, yeah, the CTE accreditation, that would be the next step. So once we get our work-based learning going, it is a whole process. We have to do some self-study. We have to review. We have to submit to the state. And that will be a process that we will begin next year, once we can say that our work-study is up and running.
Any questions?
Wow, this is...gets better every time I hear it. I love this stuff. I told Leslie this last night when we were together. I just love the whole initiative. So, board members, any questions? Catherine?
With the accreditation and get...okay, so you need to get the program off the ground first. Then you get the accreditation. But then, so is everything that's happening now, any of the credits that the kids are earning? What changes with the accreditation?
So the students will absolutely be earning high school credit for the programs currently. We needed to have the work-based learning programs, the three programs you guys just learned about, up and running before we can apply to the state for the CTE accreditation. And once we can award CTE accreditation, it's a specialized path, a pathway that a student would take. I'm sure you've heard about the different pathways that the state has come out with. And CTE is one of those pathways. Students can earn it standalone, and so it could be in addition to their Regents diploma or Regents with advanced designation. And it's really nice when a student can get that added on to their diploma as a resume builder. So we, I think, have also learned that the students who began the program, can we retroactively grant CTE endorsement?
Okay.
We have it in writing from the state. I have it laminated from the state in writing that, yes, next year, as long as we finish the process around April... They said April is enough, and we...that is very doable, then we can retroact that. So anybody enrolled next year would...if, as long as they then meet the CTE requirements, which are, you know, they have to go through, there's an assessment component, there's self-evaluation and that type of thing. But yes, that absolutely is doable.
I think that one additional thing to add is work-based learning can stand alone as a program, but it's necessary for the CTE. So it's kind of, we definitely needed to get this going first, and then it's a benefit in and of itself. And then the CTE accreditation, if we can get that retroacted, is going to be just the icing on the cake for some of these students.
Okay. Can I ask one more question, please?
No, I have a question.
Yes, you may.
Well, I defer. No, please.
Go ahead, Lisa.
I'm going to forget my question.
Well, then I shall, okay. Well, how are you being received from the various companies that you're contacting? Yes, good.
You know, any...so far, the feedback has been phenomenal. And John and I were talking last night about some other suggestions that he has in terms of, you know, who we can be connecting with. And, you know, if you guys have any suggestions in terms of who we can connect students with, we're open to any suggestions. And the students themselves have brought forward some, you know, this is where I work and I'm interested in getting credit, and so that's somebody for Jen to follow up with. So so far, the feedback has been really positive.
Great. I think we're being thoughtful too about doing some additional things we might not have done before. We went to Educators Day over at the local union hall out in Gates. And to learn about some of those technical pieces, we were putting pipes together and welding and sort of learning about some of those things, but really making those connections with some people that we might not have otherwise been exposed to. So trying to be thoughtful about putting ourselves out there in different ways to make those connections.
That's great.
Yeah, the additional piece of this too is we want to make it beneficial for the student as well. So once we get, once I get a chance to sit down with them for next year and find out exactly what pathway they're looking for, then I can call on some of the connections that I've made and, you know, network and try and cash in on some of those relationships.
And I think that's something that we found from our Career Day. Being that this was the first Career Day, we weren't sure what to expect. And, you know, it felt like, oh, we're taking these folks' time, you know, we're taking them away from their, from their jobs. And every one of them loved presenting, loved interacting with the students, raved about how polite and professional our students were. And the entire day was such a success and, you know, it was there that we kind of... It all kind of came together like, wow, this is really going to be powerful because it feels like we've been doing a lot of the work and now we're starting to see some of the benefits, even this early in the process.
It sounds terrific. Thank you.
Lisa?
Is it my turn? I hope I didn't forget my question. I'm so excited about this program. My question is about student Emma because one of the things that we've talked about the last couple, I guess, NISBA conferences, there's been a lot of talk about underemployment or kids going to college and then getting out and deciding they don't like it. So I'm super excited that we're doing this for career exploration. So if I were Emma and I got into teaching, do I have to do like my 54 hours? Or could I do, get started and then go, oh, my God, I really don't like this. Can I move to a different one? Or how does that work?
That's...I think that's going to be kind of a learning curve to see how logistically we could work that out. In theory, I would love to be able to do that. I would love to say, oh, she hates it. Let's pull her out and get her right into someplace else. But that may not be possible at this point. Yeah, because of the commitment of the mentor, you know, we're not just sending them into a workplace. It's very guided, very supervised. They're working with a mentor who's going to be telling them, you know, the ins and outs of what they're doing and, you know... And I would honestly think that it might be beneficial if they didn't like it to finish it out and see, you know, maybe it's going to get better. You know, I think if, you know, when you start substitute teaching, when you first get out of there, if that's your indicator of what the teaching profession is, you may not continue, you know? So I think there's value in having them finish that out, even if they don't like it. But ultimately, if it's a really bad fit, there are things in place that we could do to get them out of there if it's unsafe, if, you know, something along those lines.
Camille?
First of all, it was a tough act to follow, but your enthusiasm is also very evident. And Nicole, you're very experienced to get stuff in writing from the state. That's an experienced person. I have a question. You almost just touched on it a little bit. So if a student has a job out in Wegmans, Duncan, wherever, the district has no responsibility in terms of whether or not that, the people that the student is working with are trained and know how to work with students and that kind of thing. What are other schools telling you about how, you know, is there mentor training? Is there any kind of, you know, what do you do to ensure the student's safety?
Yeah, that's a great question.
Because now we are a little bit more responsible.
The state, the state puts out a pretty thick manual on the requirements that we have to follow for certain things. I have to visit the work site before I replace a student there. I have to meet with the mentor before I replace a student there. There's requirements for the mentor. They can't be a first. This can't be the first year that they've been in the position. They have to be there more than five years. You know, they have to be an upper-level person, you know? So we're not kind of, we're not sticking them with someone who is inexperienced. So that's the first thing, and that's in terms of the Co-op and internship. As far as their part-time jobs, it's a little trickier because they already have a manager. So it's going to be, you know, they'll have paperwork that they do need to fill out occasionally and evaluation on the student. And so there are a few things in place that they have to follow per state guidelines in order to ensure that they're going to be, you know, safe. And did that answer your question?
But it's never going to be the level of, so for example, for the robotics team, when you're a volunteer or you're a volunteer coach. Like, we have a kind of a rigorous process. I don't know if they're fingerprinted, but there's some things that we need to do to make sure that they're safe to work with kids. So is there, I don't know.
I think that that's kind of, it's my job to make sure that those, you know, that they're going to be a responsible person. And, you know, it is going to be a little bit of trial and error at first, but we're not, I'm not cold-calling at this point. So these are all relationships that people that, you know, work with the students have made these contacts and have worked with these people. So I'm kind of hoping that that will help alleviate some of the concerns that you're speaking about.
Well, and I think, you know, the fact that you're talking to other schools, if this was a problem, you would have heard about it and there would be steps and processes in place to take care of it.
Poor word of mouth would travel fast, yeah. You know, and we've been working, Sandy Hudek has been amazing. We're also working with Gates Chilai on the West Side, who Mr. Lanning has actually, his children go to Penfield, so he has a vested interest that we succeed at this because he wants us to. And, you know, I think there's a couple of other different locations that have been doing this for a long time. Over at Wayne Central, they actually, internship is a requirement for graduation. So they are putting, they are placing every single student in an internship. So, you know, that's kind of falling back on the networking and contacting people and just putting myself out there to make sure that, you know, checking in with them. You know, actually physically going there again to the work site and making sure that what's happening is what's supposed to happen is actually happening.
And it's nice that other districts have been doing this for a while. And so we really are learning a ton from them and can't thank them enough for lending their expertise to us.
Carol?
So you started touching on my question here. Is this open to all students? And how are we publicizing it to the students and also to the parents? Because a lot of times, they have a lot to do in, you know, helping their students consider signing up for this.
So to start with, what we've done is we really just kind of put it out there to the counselors and said, if you can think of a student that this might fit well with, please talk to them about it. We've, I know I've mentioned it in my classes. I've had a couple colleagues mention it in their classes to kind of get that word of mouth. You know, we want to kind of keep it a little bit small this first year to get the kinks out and make sure that we're running everything smoothly. We want to keep it around 25.
And it's been open to all students. It was, it was in the course guide. So students and parents could see it in the course guide and... So students and parents, um, could see it in the course guide and, um, talk to their counselor about it. Some students, um, had questions and the counselor connected the, the student and the parent with Jen. And so we've really been, um, trying to work it through, um, that way in terms of getting the information out.
But it's been a difficult balance because the survey information we gathered prior to this, tons of kids were interested. But we knew we wanted to have a, kind of almost like a pilot group of 25 because Jen is one person and she will also be teaching other classes in addition to this. So, um, you know, the manageable piece. Um, so we're close to that number right now. And, um, what we're having our students do now before they leave for summer is to fill out an application with their career goals, their interests. And so we can start working on some of those connections before the school year starts and their contact information. So.
It, it's also only offered to juniors and seniors. I'm not sure if we mentioned that at this point. Um, there's age requirements, obviously, for, um, the labor laws, but we felt that juniors and seniors would be the best representatives of Penfield and the community.
Transportation.
Transportation issues, you know, we, the school won't cover any of the transportation. None of the schools that we've spoken with do. That's all something that the parents have to understand that they are responsible for transporting their child to and from these experiences.
Okay.
Or the, the kid drives themselves.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
One more question, okay. So, uh, at the end of, uh, this period where the student is working with this potential employer, um, is, is there something that the, the employer will, uh, fill out, a survey? I don't wanna say, are they gonna grade the student? But, you know, how do you get feedback from them?
Yeah, definitely through an evaluation. And that's, there's examples and, um, of, in that, the, the state guide, the state manual and, you know, how to do that. And of course, we've got Sandy and Dan Lanning have been amazing with providing any and all information that they can to us. So we have some good guides to, um, ask the important questions that we need from them. Okay.
We'll be doing some, we'll be doing some work on this over the summer as well. We're doing some curriculum development work for those three specific classes, um, Jennifer and her colleague, Jamie Myrna. So that will be part of, of looking at those final assessments at that part.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Well, this is exciting, as I mentioned. And, uh, you know, when you talk about getting more students, whatever, so any project, there's an element of sales. So, you know, you're gonna have to sell and, uh, everything is sold when you look around everything. So, uh, we wish you luck. We look forward to hearing more about it. And, uh, again, we think it's a great, great project. So thanks for coming and giving us some information.
Thanks for having us.
You.
John, before Terry and Leslie leave, um, each board member has one of these DVDs in front of them. And so you can do a better job selling this than I can. But it's the alumni video that was created. I know Mr. Sidoti back there also had a lot of support, I believe Nancy Bradstreet too. Um, but if you could just let the board know what's in here, I would appreciate it.
So Terry, um, spearheaded, actually, the, the story behind Career Day, um, one of our teachers, Shane Waterson, who's a chemistry teacher, um, attended a professional development over the summer that, um, put teachers, connected teachers with, uh, job experiences, um, in the STEM field. And she came back so excited, you could barely contain her. And, um, she wanted, she had this dream of making, um, developing a Career Day at PHS. And, um, Terry was just as excited after hearing Shane. And so Terry and Shane spearheaded the entire day. And I'll let Terry tell you a little bit about the video.
Um, so the idea came, we had a committee that got together, um, to plan the day. And one of the ideas was to have this video of some PHS alumni talking about their career and talking about sort of their path after high school. Um, and, and then to reflect back on high school to say, you know, what do they, what would they say? Or what, you know, some tidbits of advice or, um, just things they wish they knew. Um, because we wanted to get that message to our kids, you know, that, that life goes on after high school. And it may not be exactly what you picture, but that there are great things coming. And so the video, um, is snippets of about, um, I think we wound up with a dozen or so, um, alumni that responded. And, um, it got edited and showed as a kickoff to our keynote speakers at the Career Day for both our nine, 10, and then 11 and 12. Um, and it's amazing. I mean, Don Elhart.
It's very, it's very powerful.
He's an alumni of PHS. And, um, the message was so perfect from every one of those people about that, you know, high school is just this, this tough time at times for people. And that just to go on and to, to follow your dreams and to persevere.
Take risks.
Take risks. And, um, that there's just amazing things out there. And the message really couldn't have, have been more perfect for all of us. So it's awesome. So check it out.
Thank you. I, just for the board, I, I wanted to play it tonight, but I knew that with all of our presentations, you'd be here past midnight. So instead, thanks to Mike, we made copies for everybody. And, uh, please make sure you take a look at it. It's wonderful.
Yes, thank you. It's, it's awesome.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Everybody has a copy, right? So.
Yep.
There'll be a quiz next month. Be prepared. All right. Thanks, Mike, for adding to that and for all you do. Okay, we're at our, uh, page three of our agenda. Visitor speaking time. This is the time within the agenda for residents to bring concerns and comments to the board. Comments should not be related to any particular individual or specifics of negotiation since it's not proper for the board to discuss these issues in public session. A request to speak comment must be filled out prior to the start of the citizens' comment period and given to the district clerk. It's expected speakers will limit their comments to five minutes or less. And the board, of course, reserves the right to limit the total amount of time on the citizens' comment period based on the agenda. And we always encourage written communication. And I don't think anybody turned anything in. So, um, we'll move on. And, uh, last night, uh, I had the privilege of, uh, presiding over the National Honor Society. And, um, our own Claire was inducted among, along with 64 other juniors. So congratulations. And, uh, the, the number is just incredible. So, uh, again, it's, it's great. And I said this last night, I mean, it's, it's a launching pad for everybody to be in such an elite society. So, welcome to the society. And what's going on?
All right. So, um, on Friday, May 12th, all the students in Penfield wore Penfield colors in order to represent the Penfield Strong Movement, which focuses on uniting the community. Also, parents from many of the Penfield schools sent treats, cards, and messages of love and support. At Harris Hill, students participated in the penny games in which they collected pennies in order to raise money for donations. And $774.84 were raised in two weeks. Um, students visited the Alpaco Recycling Center to learn more about recycling and where recycled materials are sent to and processed. And Harris Hill students raised $656 for the NCMEC through their kindergarten Bike-A-Thon and Bike for a Buck fundraisers. At Cobles, third graders studied culture at the Helmer Nature Center where they were able to interact with animals from different environments and geographic areas. And third graders engaged in a series of learning chats with the NASA crew during their mission. At Indian Landing, fifth graders explored and wrote about different career choices they were interested in. And students went on field trips to Wild Wings, Mount Hope Cemetery, the Erie Canal, Corbett's Glen, and Springdale Farms. Also, choir students were able to perform at the Lilac Festival. At Scribner, kindergarten classes invited their mothers to come celebrate Mother's Day. And third graders shared a variety of cultures from different countries through song and dance during the World of Music performance. Also, spring music concert season in the elementary schools is starting, which allows a lot of the students to involve in orchestra and band to share their talents with families and friends. At Bay Trail, students from the elementary school and middle school advertised their school science projects at the Independent Project Gala. And Bay Trail students presented their research on environmental concerns and pledged to help protect the environment in the future. Um, at Penfield High School, the parents decorated the outside of the building, the fences, the path behind the school, and the road leading to the school with red and black ribbons and signs with words of encouragement and part of the Penfield Strong Movement. Also, last week, PHS hosted the Career Day in which students listened to two keynote speakers and professionals in different occupations to learn about different opportunities in the future. Um, in addition, the unified basketball team became league champions. And the National Honor Society Spring Induction was held last night, which welcomed new members. And finally, the senior ball was held this past weekend at Casa Larga.
Busy time. Any questions for Claire? Great report as usual and, uh, winding down the school year. So, um, I'm sure you've got a lot of studying to do. So if you don't wanna hang around, you don't have to. But, uh, we appreciate your updates. And again, congratulations on, on being a member of the National Honor Society.
Thank you.
Superintendent's reports, Dr. Putnam.
Thank you. We actually just have student, uh, my, the student and staff honors. So there's no, uh, other formal, um, updates, just some board business. Um, really excited to mention, um, uh, congratulations to senior Colby Wiktorzki, who was selected as Penfield High School's Outstanding Senior. Uh, this is an award given every year in honor of, um, of, um, a superintendent who passed away, uh, from Brockport. And, um, the prize is one of the most exciting prizes. It's dinner with his, uh, parents and me. So some students get cash awards or trophies. Colby got to hang out with Dr. Putnam. But, um, it's all the superintendents in Monroe County, and it's held out at SUNY Brockport. And, uh, happens every year. And it was actually really nice. Colby is a great, a great kid. Many of you know that he, uh, worked the cameras many times this year and last year. And, um, his, his family is wonderful. And, uh, we got to celebrate Colby. And, uh, we sat with Fairport and, uh, their student. And, um, again, just a, a great night. And congratulations to Colby. Uh, Jump Rope for Heart, Harris Hill students and families raised, I, I have to double-check this number, $14,634 for the American Heart Association during their recent Jump Rope for Heart fundraiser. Uh, I know many of our schools do this, and this is Harris Hill's total. And, and just a, a great work again of giving back. Should have mentioned when they were here, they already did a much better job, um, talking about it. But congratulations to our Penfield Robotics Team, who represented, as we were here earlier, being named the Curry Division Champions at the World Championship in St. Louis. Their alliance also came in third place overall out of 400 teams in the competition. And obviously, they did a great job. Uh, Cobles fundraiser, the Cobles Elementary School raised $662 for water for Sudan and collected 567 non-perishable food items for the Penfield Food Shelf in its annual Cobles Cares Basketball Game. Uh, I did get to go out to that one with my dad hat on. Uh, it was a, a great time. Um, sometimes at halftime in the past, they would do these relay races where students got selected and they got to run a relay race. Um, it was kind of fun, but only a couple kids got to participate. Uh, this was the biggest turnout of that Cobles that I recall ever seeing. And it was because at halftime, it was a dance party. So everybody got to dance on the dance floor to some really fun music. And, um, it was a, a lot of fun. I didn't dance. Um, the Envirothon Award, congratulations to the PHS Envirothon Team, which took third place in its very first competition focused on environmental issues and working to, um, save the environment. Very, very cool. Our Newspaper Award, uh, congratulations to the staff of the PHS Student Newspaper, The Pendulum, which earned first-place honors in the American Scholastic Press Association's Annual Review and Contest Awards for Scholastic Newspapers. And this is the fifth year in a row that The Pendulum has earned this recognition. So while the world goes to, uh, online media, our Pendulum here at the high school continues to get first place. And they do a lot of great work. Outstanding Service Awards, the Urban Suburban Programs Outstanding Service Slugger Award winners. This year, uh, uh, our very own Principal, uh, Mark Nelson from Harris Hill and Principal Scott Herschler from Scribner. So, uh, wonderful award. They were, um, honored at the, um, Urban Suburban, um, Award Program, where students are also given, uh, scholarships and senior awards. And, um, it was very exciting. They have a very nice plaque. And, uh, we appreciate the, a partnership we have with the Urban Suburban Program and the City School District. Um, some of you might recognize these pictures.
Ooh.
The New York State School Board Association School U Recognition. Congratulations to our very own Lisa Benati-Chidzie and Mark Elidge for achieving the Level Two Board Excellence Award for participation in NISBA Leadership Development Opportunities. And so I have, uh, I have these wonderful awards for you from the New York State School Board Association.
All right. Yay.
So even our, for any students up watching tonight, even our school board are lifelong learners and continue to take, uh, classes and workshops in order to, to better their understanding and be able to support our school. So thank you. That is the end of my updates.
Okay. Well, congratulations. And, uh, it's correct, we can never stop. And we have a lot of opportunities with our, uh, state association to do that. You know, the Newspaper Award reminds me that maybe we need, uh, an internship at a newspaper or something, you know, for the program.
Yeah.
Or, um, Rochester Business Journal or City Newspaper. Uh, so if we're so good at it, we must have some good talent.
It's a great idea. I will write that down.
Okay.
Jim, please write that down.
Get back to me tomorrow on that. Okay. We're on Board Business Facilities. We have change orders for the high school in regard to, um, uh, capital project and, uh, the lights, a change order. If I could have a motion in a second that the change orders as described above be approved?
So, a second.
Okay, we motion a second. Are there any questions on any of the change orders? All those in favor? Thank you. Real property tax exemption for solar, wind, and farm waste energy systems. Solar energy systems are becoming commonplace. These systems are real property once they are fixed to land or to a structure. As such, they are taxable unless they qualify for exemption. There's a property tax exemption that applies specifically to solar energy systems. Section 487 of the Real Property Tax Law provides for 15-year exemption from real property taxation for the increase in value resulting from the installation of a qualifying system. It also allows municipalities and school districts to opt out of the exemption. The town of Penfield has taken action to opt out of the exemption. And in line with that, approval of the attached resolution is recommended. Whereas Paragraph 2 of Section 487 of the Real Property Tax Law in the state of New York provides real property which includes a solar or wind energy system or farm waste energy system, approved in accordance with the provisions of such section shall be exempt from taxation to the extent of any increase in the value thereof by reason of the inclusion of such solar, wind energy system or farm waste energy system for a period of 15 years. And whereas Paragraph 8, Section 487 provides that notwithstanding the provisions of section, Paragraph 2, school district may by board resolution provide that no exemption under Section 487 shall be applicable within its jurisdiction with respect to any solar or wind energy system or farm waste energy system constructed subsequent to the effective date of such board resolution. And whereas the Board of Education wishes to exercise the right to opt out pursuant to the rights granted to us, therefore be resolved that the Board of Education hereby declares that the tax exemption be made available by Section 487 of the Real Property Tax Law shall not be applicable within the boundaries of the Penfield Central School District with respect to any solar, wind, and/or farm waste energy systems constructed subsequent to the date of this resolution. The resolution, if approved, shall be effective immediately. If I could have a motion in a second?
Second.
So, uh, I know we had some discussion going back and forth in regard to this. So does anybody have any comments in regard to this at all? Or did we get enough clarification from Mark or Tom? Mark?
I, you know, there's a, a number of facets to this in terms of residential and commercial, uh, what kinds of installations could be done. And, and of course, I think Mark gave us some clarification that you can't pick and choose. So it's, it's all or nothing, although you do have options of pilots. Um, but what's, you know, what is unclear is what would be the fiscal impact to district or to the community if you go one way or another. And so one of the things I was wondering is, is, is there something gating the timing of this resolution? Is there something that, so, like, for example, the cycle for which we collect property taxes or anything like that, that, that drives a certain point in time where we need to get it done? Uh, and if we, if we go past that timeline, then it's like another year before it has any impact?
I think I'll, I'll just touch base to say that two things in terms of timing. Um, one is that the town board has already approved this. So we, um, that, and that just happened at, I believe, their May 3rd meeting. And, um, if there is, you can't retroactively put this in place. So we're, at the moment, there are no solar farms that we are aware of being built in, in Penfield. So, um, that'd be it. I don't know in terms of, I look at Mark in terms of, I don't think there's a timing issue, but in terms of, if, if a solar farm came into play and started building tomorrow, we can't retroactive- we can't retroactively put this in place.
And that's really the only, to my way of thinking, that's the only press of time around that, so, you know, we're unaware of any, so I don't think there's anything imminent that the board necessarily needs to deal with this tonight if they think they need more information. I think, you know, one of the questions that you had asked, you know, prior to the meeting, we need, I would need to get some additional information from the town assessor regarding. They're in the middle of grievance hearings this week, so she was sort of unwilling to drop that and to deal with our questions around solar farms, which I certainly understand. So, you know, if the board wanted to table this, we could answer some of those questions. I, you know, it's entirely possible, I suppose, that a solar farm application pops up tomorrow, but, you know, I think it's somewhat remote.
So, along those lines, is there a trigger, what would constitute a pre-existing?
It's the agreement, once they sign the contract, once the, as I understand it, once the arrangement, the contractual arrangements in place, then it preexists, so it doesn't depend on the construction or the, any of that, it's really just the legal commitment to go ahead.
And we have not heard of anything or?
I have not.
Okay. So, I guess I would like to make a motion that we table this until we can get some additional information.
I'm not going to accept that yet, because we have a motion on the table, but I want to recognize the fact that the town of Penfield is responsible for all the residents of the town, we're responsible for the students. So, as you think about this, I want you to think about our primary question, which is what's in the best interest of our students. So, we have a lot of choices that we can make, and a lot of choices we can't make. So, I look at this as one that we have a choice on that benefits our students in that regard. But nonetheless, if there's a motion to table it, you know, I'll certainly accept that, but, so you would have to basically defeat this motion, this resolution, and then make a second motion for that. You can amend the resolution.
I can.
Okay, but you have a resolution on the table that we have a motion in a second, so it's either defeat that or pass it, and then we would entertain the second motion.
So, you vote it down, is what you're saying?
You would vote it down, but I want you to keep in mind, what's in the best interest of the students. So, in my opinion, if you vote it down, it might be construed as a vote against the students, but I'll honor whatever this board wants to do, that's my personal opinion.
If we, just a clarifying question, because we haven't been here before, if we, if the board votes this down, can they bring it back to a?
Once it's tabled, yes.
Okay.
And once it goes tabled, it's tabled indefinitely until, but you have to have a three-quarter majority to bring it back from the table, just as you need a, or a supermajority, I guess, to put it under the table. So, that would be five votes either way. Is everybody clear on that?
So, let's clarify, so.
Okay.
You're saying that in order to table the motion, we take the motion that's on the table right now to this, this right here, this resolution, we're going to, all right, so that, we vote on this, this is the next thing we're going to do, is we're going to vote on that motion, one way or the other, right?
Well, here's what I could also do, I mean, as I rattle through this, if you want to change it, if the mover of the motion and the second wishes to withdraw, that's another way to do it. So, whoever made the motion?
I made the motion.
So, if you wish to withdraw it, we can, yeah, we can do that, we can make it withdraw. So, I, you know, if you want to table it, that's okay, you just have to move through the process.
Well. Chair, it says the chair has the motion. It's second. You want her to withdraw it? Tell her to withdraw it. Just withdraw it. I don't want to withdraw it, I, I, I think it's in the best interest of our students to see this through, so.
Okay.
This is a conflict for me, I don't, so I would like to just keep the motion on the table.
So, I'm going to call the question, okay? All those in favor?
Of the?
The motion. Okay.
Okay.
So, the motion failed, so now we're going to entertain another motion.
Then I would like the motion to table the resolution.
If there's a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? You need, okay, that's good, that's four-three.
That's fine.
Did you get that?
Part of that would be, I know there were some, waiting on some more information, as Mark Sansucci mentioned, from the town assessor, and we can, when that information comes in after they go through grievance, we can.
Right, so, you know, we'll gather that as quickly as we can, you know, we'll see whether it's by the next meeting or a subsequent meeting, I guess, but I, what I would like to ask is that as the board thinks about it, if you have specific questions, and the more specific, the better probably, then I'd be happy to ask those so that we just kind of go around once and kind of get everything that we think we need to know to be able to make a decision, that I think would probably be helpful, so.
And maybe this came a little too quick, because it came quick to us.
Yep.
So, there's no problem with looking at it in a different vein, and now that it's, you know, we can bring it back to the table the same way you brought it, so, or it can sit indefinitely, and we've had that happen before as well. Okay? Good discussion, okay. Health and Safety Committee Charter, per the commissary's regulations, it was necessary to readapt the Penfield Health and Safety Committee Charter each year. Charter was reviewed and readopted with no changes by the committee at their May 18, 2017 meeting. Charter was given by the Board of Education prior to the meeting for review, which we saw and was prevented. If I could have a motion, second, that the Penfield Health and Safety Committee Charter is approved as submitted. So.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Thank you. We have textbook approval in front of you on regard to AP Music Theory, ELA, ELA 8, Social Studies, AP Psychology, LoD, Spanish 3R and 3H, and we've been through this once. So, if we could have a motion, in a second, that the Board of Education approved the above recommended textbook as presented on May 2, 2017.
So, move.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Thanks. Approved. Donations and book fair proceeds, donations and book fair proceeds totaling $4,573.02 for items in the 2016-17 budget was received by the district schools as shown. Indian Landing Elementary Book Fair Proceeds, $1,925.55. Bay Trail Middle Yearbook Club, $1,729.47. Cobles Elementary Veterans Day Celebration, $322. Scribner Elementary Target of War, $600. If I could have a motion, second, that the Board of Education approved an amendment totaling $4,573.02 to the 2016-17 budget as shown above, the amount submitted both as revenue and expenditure items and expressed its gratitude to the donors for their generous support of Penfield students and all Penfield parents, students, and staff for the support of this year's Indian Landing Book Fair.
Second.
Second, okay. Questions, comments? All those in favor? Approved, thank you. Okay, we had our vote, and the following are the vote results from the May 16, 2017 budget vote and election as certified by the inspectors of election. Proposition Number One, which was our budget, passed, 1,138 votes to 269. Number Two, bus purchases, passed, 1,154 votes to 254. Number Three, establishment of the Capital Reserve Fund, passed, 1,142 votes to 263. Our candidates received the following votes, Jonathan Otney, 832 votes, Lisa Benati-Chidzie, 839 votes, and William Jaeger, 803 votes. Jonathan Otney and Lisa Benati-Chidzie were elected to the Board of Education for terms beginning July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020. So, John, you're in the audience, we look forward to working with you and continuing to work with Lisa, and, well, Camille, that's another story, we're going to talk about you next month, so. We have a Board of Education Strategic Planning Session that John should be informed about that we're doing as well, kind of a half-day to three-quarter day session, and if you haven't received that information, let us know, and I know everybody.
He'll be there.
He's all set.
Okay, good, just double checking, because he's our audience tonight. And I want Tom to talk a little bit, we met with some superintendents and board presidents with Cometa, and, you know, that's fresh on my mind when we talk about the other things, because our meeting with Cometa is, we generally don't have a lot of choice with Cometa properties and tax abatements, but Jeff Adair, the new director of Cometa, or as they're now known, Imagine Monroe, why did he have a meeting with some board presidents and some superintendents? So, we all convened out at BOCES 2 in Spencerport last week, and I'll let Tom give an update from his perspective on it.
I was going to have to correct you that it's no longer Cometa, it's Imagine Monroe. Everything is different now. So, basically, the piece that I think we got out of it was that it was Mr. Adair who wanted to meet with, with superintendents, they reached out to Dan White and Joanne BOCES 1 and 2 superintendents, and they put together a group of about, with about 15 people there, superintendents and board presidents, just to at least make an introduction. Cometa, or now Imagine Monroe, typically works just with the town supervisors and town boards, they do talk a lot when they are trying to win businesses to move here and take on one of these tax abatements, they talk a lot about Wegmans, if it's a produce wholesaler or a farm, they talk a lot about the wonderful colleges that are here. But one thing they, they have never really talked about with businesses looking to come into Monroe County is the public school system, and so representatives as well from Monroe County School Board was there, Sherri Johnson was there, and we are providing them through the Monroe County School Board Association, providing a lot of information, are, we're going to update, or Sherri Johnson's going to work with her team to update the sort of facts and figure book to really focus it in for Imagine Monroe, so they can share that information as well. One of the things we learned is that there is a monthly email that goes out to all town supervisors and town boards that talks about potential tax abatement deals that are being made or talked about or discussed, and that's something that we don't always get, and so from now on, Imagine Monroe is going to send that to the BOCES 1 and 2 district superintendents, who will then share it with the other superintendents, and I can add it to our, you know, my Friday Notes to the Board as well as to our business office, so we can be aware of those conversations. You know, a lot of it is those programs are done, those tax abatements are done, you know, outside of schools, it's really around the town and what works there, and we're just sort of are informed, and then we have, obviously, a financial impact that comes along with that. But I think it was, I think it's fair to say that it was a positive meeting, and at least sort of an introduction meeting, and sort of putting names to faces, and I, you know, for, we'll see where it comes from, but again, it was very cordial and respectful, and they had reached out wanting to meet with us, so I take that as a positive.
Yeah, and, I mean, a lot of school districts that weren't there wouldn't go, and thus they weren't invited to this session because there's, they have no say, and they're suffering deficits as a result of these Cometa programs, so thus I have a sensitivity about not gathering our income when we can, but I think the good part was, I did know this, but not for long, that the legal counsel that they use, who goes with him everywhere now, lives across the street from me, so it's a Penfield resident, and she's with Harris Beach, and I think she did a good job kind of corralling him and giving him a greater understanding of kind of what's going on. But my main concern was also about economic development. You know, unless you bring companies in, and you bring jobs, you know, then you build houses, and then you create a tax base for schools, and right now, they, I guess, do the opposite, you know, Mark, I think in those terms, so, for 10 years, it's the opposite, and they break agreements, and it's a contract that we have no say about, so, and that was made pretty clear, I mean, we don't have a say under the law, but they are trying to tweak it, and they are trying to at least make this a place to live, and we learned about hydra, what is it?
There's a hydroponic kale.
Hydroponic kale plant.
That is being grown out in the Gates, I think it's Gates.
Yes, and these companies are all being attracted because of Wegmans, so that's the drawing, they want to be near Wegmans, but nonetheless, it's grown from seed to market.
15 days.
15 days, untouched by human hands.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So, then they have, they're right near the Wegmans distributor, and this is obviously not an impact for the Penfield community, but it was interesting, you know, that this company's coming here instead of the Midwest because of the tax abatement through Cometa, and I was just disappointed because I don't like kale, and it means it's going to be on the shelves so much faster, but.
And the water, the water source.
Right, the water.
So, I've mentioned, I think the group agreed, I said, you know, the key sources we have in our community is water, real estate, and schools. So, we offered to, you know, to go out, and if they need help talking to groups to talk about our schools, you know, we can do that, and I think he's going to be getting on the road, so there may be some potential there, so, okay. I'm sorry.
I just said, thanks for going.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's, anytime government asks for input, I'm going to be there.
Yeah, no, it's good.
So, okay, I don't have any new business, so with that, I'll have a motion to adjourn, motion in a second to adjourn at 8:50 PM.
So, move.
All those in favor? Thank you very much.